Okay, good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us. Happy New Year 2021. I hope you all had a good and restful winter break. If you had a winter break or at least the holidays, and hopefully, everybody was able to at least connect with family members and things however you did that over the break. I know with everything that we're dealing with as far as the pandemic, you know, it's a little bit crazy and just trying to get things going. So anyway, we're gonna go ahead and start this portion of our meeting. It's more of an unofficial part of our meeting, something we had started pre-COVID, and it was an attempt to, you know, be able to recognize things and proclamations and have celebrations that really didn't get into the meat of our meeting. It allowed those that really just wanted to be there for the meeting to show up at six and be a part of that meeting. This is more of an informal piece and just an opportunity to recognize again resolutions that we feel are special enough to do that. Also, as you see tonight, we have an award presentation that we want to do as well. So typically, it also gives people a chance to leave when they need to get out, and they don't want to sit through all the exciting stuff of our regular council meeting. So those of you who are here and want to be a part of that regular council meeting, it still starts at six o'clock. So the official part of that meeting won't start until six. So what will happen is we will basically kind of just stop talking. We'll go on mute and turn off our cameras until six, and right at six o'clock, I'll pop back on and we'll start the official part of our city council meeting for January 12, 2021. So until then, we're just gonna go over our first couple of items. Our first one is a proclamation recognizing Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And as you know, Martin Luther King Jr. Day is coming up this Monday, and I, for one, am somewhat not somewhat, I'm very excited. I'm somewhat not as excited because one of my favorite things to do as mayor is I usually get invited to, sorry, I get invited to New Jerusalem Baptist Church for their big congregation that they get together with all the other churches in the area, in the region, and they have a celebration, and I usually get invited to that to at least welcome everybody to the City of Fountain and just be a part of that celebration of a really great man and someone I would consider a prophet among everybody that we have in our history and just someone who did a lot to sacrifice, not only for himself, and I, you know, as a teacher, I've talked to the kids about this a lot, and been a big part of our discussion this week. And, you know, he sacrificed himself, put himself on the bigger stage so that, you know, we could really celebrate all the things that he's done. And, you know, we have these hiccups like 2020 has been, and so far into 2021, just these hiccups. And I think, you know, society will hopefully kind of get back on course, I'm praying, that we'll get there. But he is a model for that, and the things that he and his followers and the people that worked with him did during a very tumultuous time in our history as Americans. He did some really great things. And again, to put himself out there and just to be in the middle of that and really take that leadership role on was a very hard thing to do. But he did it with such grace and humility and compassion for everybody involved that, you know, he stood his ground at the same time. He did it the right way. He did it in a way that really affected change and obviously for the better for a lot of us today. And so with that, as a proclamation recognizing Martin Luther King Jr. Day, I'm gonna go ahead and just read that into the record. January 18, 2020, whereas Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was born on January 15, 1929, and dedicated his life to promoting peace, freedom, equality, and justice for all through nonviolent means. And whereas federal and state legislation has recognized a legacy of the Reverend Dr. King as one of America's outstanding civil rights leaders by designating the third Monday of January as a federal holiday. And whereas on August 28, 1963, Reverend Dr. King delivered a historic speech at the Lincoln Memorial, which called for an end to racism in the United States, saying, "Let us not wallow in the valley of despair. I say to you today, my friends, and so even though we face the difficulties of today and tomorrow, I still have a dream. It is a dream deeply rooted in the American dream. I have a dream that one day this nation will rise up and live out the true meaning of its creed. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal." And whereas Reverend Dr. King also said in the historic address, "And this will be the day, this will be the day when all of God's children will be able to sing with the new meaning, 'My country tis of Thee, sweet land of liberty of Thee I sing. Let freedom ring from the snow-capped Rockies of Colorado.'" And whereas the campaign for a federal holiday in honor of the Reverend Dr. King began soon after his assassination in 1968, and President Ronald Reagan signed the holiday into law in 1983, and was subsequently first observed three years later. And whereas every year, events are held across multiple days in the Pikes Peak region to commemorate and highlight the legacy of the Reverend Dr. King. And whereas the City of Fountain proudly recognizes the spirit, determination, achievements of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Fountain, Colorado hereby recognizes January 18, 2020, January 18, 2021, and the third Monday of January each year moving forward as Martin Luther King Jr. Day to honor all the accomplishments and sacrifices of those who work to ensure equality, dignity, and opportunity for all. So I am, normally, we do a motions. This is an informal part of the meeting. How should we handle that, Ms. Huffman or City Attorney Troy?
My recommendation, just for an acceptance of the proclamation and not a formal motion.
What should we do? Sorry. Do I do a motion and second, or do we what?
No, just verbally acceptance of the proclamation. You can have a consensus of the rest of council.
I accept. Say that again, I'm sorry.
I accept. This is Richard.
Okay.
Ms. Tamara, I accept.
This is Sam, I accept.
And I accept.
Okay.
Well, this is Greg. And this is Greg, I wholeheartedly accept.
Okay, thank you for that. And Ms. Martinez is on the line, who helps with the MLK event. Do you want to say anything? I know you have been working to put things together. Go ahead.
Yes, I sure do. Thank you guys so much for doing this here in Fountain. I think it's so important that not just Colorado Springs, but El Paso County and all the different cities within understand the importance of, you know, the dream that Martin Luther King had. And thank you, Mayor Ortega, for really talking about, you know, who he is and what this is about. And I just wanted to make sure people knew that the community, if the theme is community out of chaos, change now this year, it's going to be on January 18, starting at eight o'clock, there's going to be an online virtual event. It'll be open to the public. It's free to the public. So this year, we're not doing, you know, the usual breakfast and all that stuff because of COVID. So a lot of us, different nonprofits, movement groups, the NAACP, Justice in Peace, groups of us from Fountain, all came together, and we all worked with Colorado College to put this on for the community. So if you go out to Colorado College, you will see the Facebook Live link, and you will also see the Eventbrite link, because there are going to be some breakout sessions with some discussions. And a new thing is, we are not going to just stop at MLK. We will be doing events throughout the year. So we're going to be bringing events all over El Paso County so that everybody can be a part of the conversation of reflecting on ways that we can creatively strengthen the community and commitment to actions and justice in light of COVID, the pandemic, the political unrest, continued psychological and physical violence against people with marginalized social identities, and that individually and collectively, we are responsible for making the changes we know are necessary for a more inclusive and equitable society. So many of us are working together to ensure that we don't stop on just MLK Day, that we move this on throughout the years. And there was a proclamation at the City today for the Religious Rights Day, and that would be on Saturday, on January 16. So just wanted to get that information out and let you guys know there's a lot happening.
Okay. Well, thank you for doing that. And yeah, thank you for being a part of that and helping organize it, at least in the name of Fountain as well. So I'm glad you lived down here. And we do look forward to that event. And, you know, one of the things I tell my students as well is, you know, you guys think of it as a day off, but there's a reason why we do that, and so we could take the time to honor what Dr. King and his people did and all the work that, you know, I said, there's a lot of people behind the scenes that helped carry the message and fought the good fight. And, you know, if it wasn't for his leadership to push those people and to feel uncomfortable and to really put yourself out there, you know, that a lot of the changes that we saw then wouldn't have occurred. And who knows where we'd be today. And, you know, even though we're in the middle of some weird, crazy, weird stuff right now, I think eventually, you know, you know, I guess the optimist in me is, you know, the good will finally eventually rise to the top and calmer heads will prevail. But we'll see. And, you know, the last message I tell them as well is, is change starts with one person, and that one person's you. And, you know, if you can continue that positivity and those good things that Dr. King preached, we'll all get there eventually. So.
Yeah, and we also want that to be a day of service, that we don't just sit home and, you know, it's a day off. We want people to actually be active and do something. Doesn't mean you have to get out of your comfort zone from COVID or anything, but a day of service and something that you do to help someone.
Right. Yeah, that's the other part. It's just explain to them that we need to serve each other. We need to help each other in everybody's time of need and really, you know, help one another out. So thank you for doing that. Okay. Also, I have Ms. Kimberly Peterson.
Mr. Mayor, before she gets off the line, I didn't understand what she said about Saturday. There was something also?
Oh, no. It's, there was just a proclamation that was read about the religious, the religious kind of proclamation that everybody's equally has the right to seek their religious, you know, beliefs and things like that. So that is actually a proclamation that the city made for January 16. So there's nothing going on. It was just letting people know that these two kind of go together.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. And then I do see another hand up. Normally, we don't take hands for proclamations, but go ahead, Ms. Peterson.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor Ortega, for giving me just a few seconds. I wanted to reiterate the message that Shirley had regarding the Martin Luther King Jr. Events Facebook page that is Colorado College Campus Activities. We have a lot of pages out there, so make sure you drill it down to Colorado College Campus Activities, and that's where you will find all of the things to join us and all of the sponsors on January the 18th.
Hold on one second. Can you repeat that? And I'm gonna have someone from staff copy that down, and then, or if you can just text that in the chat bar, and then we'll see if we can get that put on our website as well, the city website. So if anybody wants to use that link and just directly go over to that, would that be okay?
I will definitely set that in the chat for you.
Okay, thank you. And so Scott, if you, I didn't, I don't see John on yet, but if we can get that onto the website, I think that'd be great. So people have that opportunity to join that link.
We sure will, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. Peterson. All right. So on that, we will formally, thank you for doing that. And again, this is an important part of our history and hopefully something people now, especially the over out East, can kind of remember the reason why we're here. Next is a, where did it go? Duckwood Road Engineering News Record Award Presentation. And I think Ms. Williams is doing this. Mr. Evans, do you know?
Yes, Brandy, Brandy's on. She's on.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. I didn't see your name.
Yeah, because for whatever reason, my sound is not coming through my computer, but that's another story. Brandy Williams, city engineer. This particular video that I'm going to trust that IT has put together, because I clearly do not have the skills to do that, was shown at Engineering News Record when we got the award for the Duckwood Road Crossing, and I just wanted to share it with all of you. I think Sharon was there, but I don't think she'd mind seeing it again. So I just wanted to show this to highlight one of our local projects and now an award-winning project so that for those of you who couldn't be at that award presentation, you got a glimpse of what they showed on our project, and I think it was an amazing video. So go ahead, Paul, or whoever's gonna make it play.
Next, this project team worked closely with the community and the railroads to improve a busy street in Fountain, Colorado.
Best Highway Bridge, US 85, Duckwood Road Improvements. The City of Fountain was concerned about major safety issues and needed to remove an outdated railroad crossing, which led to a major highway and intersection project. The project required extensive coordination with several agencies and two railway companies. The new roadway originated in Fountain Creek Regional Park, crossed the BNSF and Union Pacific Railroads, and connected to a new signalized intersection at Duckwood Road and US 85. Re-sequencing of construction paid off when railroad timelines were delayed because of weather-related track emergencies around the country. Construction crews were able to move ahead with other tasks until the railroads allowed work to continue.
Great teamwork. Now Wilson and Company has a few words for us.
Thank you, ENR, for your recognition of the Duckwood Road Project. This is one of the largest projects the city has undertaken and has greatly increased connectivity throughout the city. I would like to thank the project team of Wilson and Company, Drexel Burrell and Keywit Construction for all of their hard work to bring this project to fruition. Thank you.
On behalf of Keywit, thank you for letting us be a part of the Duckwood Road Project.
Thank you, City of Fountain and Wilson and Company.
Drexel Burrell and Company would like to thank ENR for recognizing the Duckwood Road Project, the City of Fountain, and our team. Please keep up the good work on behalf of our industry. Thank you.
Thank you, ENR, for the recognition for the Duckwood Project. We're really excited to be part of the project team and want to thank everybody that's been involved, from Wilson and Company, and Keywit, and Drexel Burrell, and the City of Fountain. Thank you so much.
So I just wanted to share that for those of you that couldn't be there. Again, thank you for all of your support. And I don't know that all of our other projects are gonna win awards, but we can always try. Again, thanks for your support and just wanted to share that with you all.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Yeah, no, it's, you know, that was one of those projects that I was on planning commission when they came and CDOT, I think it was CDOT that came and said, guess what, you guys have to shut Mesa Road down. And I, like, all of a sudden, it's just like, what are we gonna do? But it, you know, then from that time until now, to have a great area there, a good crossing, it's a lot safer, you know, just everything with that project just really came to fruition. And thanks, Brandy, most of all, for really just guiding that process through and ensuring all the teams that are working together made that project reality for us. So thanks to everybody on that, and great job. And yeah, hopefully, we can keep pushing for other awards. But, you know, we are, we are a model for the region anyway. So just thanks for keeping that going. So with that, we are going to kind of sign off, not really sign off, but we're gonna stop with our videos and talking for the next nine minutes before we start our next meeting. You may ask, why can't you just start the meeting? Because official start time's at six, and so there may be public that's wanting to jump on at six o'clock. So we're gonna wait until six. I will be back then. But that is the informal part of our meeting, and thank you for joining us. I'll see you back in about eight minutes.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Ms. Huffman, are you ready to go?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So it is January 12, 2021. I will call our city council meeting to order, first one of the year. So welcome, everybody. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of the United States, under God.
All right. Okay, Ms. Huffman, roll call, please.
Mayor Ortega.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Lauer.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Estes.
Here.
Councilmember Applegate.
Here.
Councilmember Geek. Councilmember Geek.
Here.
Councilmember Duncan.
Here.
Seven members virtually present.
Okay, thank you. And I did want to welcome everybody to our first council meeting of the year. Thank you for joining us tonight. It is 2021, and I think a lot of us are hoping we'd be back in the normal.
Hello?
Are you, anybody hear me?
I have lost the mayor.
I can hear everybody except for the mayor.
Yeah.
We have no picture either. Just a blank screen.
Just a blank screen.
We have lost service. We'll go ahead and pause the meeting for just a moment.
And, you know, we'll continue working and moving forward, and someone says.
You froze up, and we didn't hear any of that.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
I can hear you now.
Sorry about that. So we'll just go ahead and continue forward, you know, I think really it's just about, you know, just, just the horrible in people is really showing itself right now, and I don't know why, and hopefully calmer heads will prevail, and we could really start to move forward as a country, and hopefully someone eventually, you know, the bigger players here will finally decide that we need a meeting in the middle somewhere, and we just haven't had that in a while, and rather than, than, you know, getting calmer heads to prevail, everyone just wants to fight with each other and not figure it out, so let's be an example, let's, let's push our city forward in a positive way, and, and we do it together as we have been for the last however many years, and we're, you know, we're looking to grow in a, in a good and positive way, and, and while we'll have our detractors every now and then, you know, I think overall, the things that we're doing here as a model to even those in the bigger part of the country, so let's just have good prayers and thoughts for everybody involved, and and hopefully we can get through the next two weeks with, without, you know, any conflict and things like that, and and that's my hope for everybody as we move forward. I hope you had a great Christmas time and New Year's, and, and looking forward to see what 2021 brings us, so with that, I'm just gonna jump right into it, and we do have, we're on item 4A. Presentations, we had none tonight. Oh, Paul, I'm sorry. Let me see what kind of attendees we have. We have a lot of attendees tonight. It looks like most of the people are new, or a couple of people are new, so Paul, if you don't mind just going through your spiel for the, how to run the, or how to ask questions and things, please go ahead.
Sure thing. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. If you're joining us through the GoToWebinar desktop interface, you will see a window. If all you're seeing is the four buttons as it appears here, it means that that window is hidden. To show the whole window, just click the orange arrow to open the user interface. All attendees' microphones are muted, and there are two ways that you can communicate with city council. One would be to virtually raise your hand by clicking on the hand button on your vertical menu bar. The other would be to type your question into the question pane in the attendee interface. If you're not connected to the web presentation, you will not be able to raise your hand or ask a question.
Does everybody else have something on their screen? Mine's just black. I don't see a thing.
Well, mine's just black, too.
Let me try resharing that standby one.
I've got it.
I have the slides.
Okay, how about now? Nope.
I have them. I had it for a second, they don't want to wait.
I have them.
Okay, sounds like it might be possibly a local network issue. Okay, I'll go ahead and I'll press on, for those that can't see it. To virtually raise your hand, click on the hand button on your vertical attendee menu bar. When your hand is raised, the arrow will turn from green to red, and a member of staff will call on you by the name you registered, and we'll unmute you. To ask a question in the questions pane, in the attendee pane, type your question to the city council and/or staff members. Staff will read the question out loud and direct it to the appropriate party. Again, if the question pane is not visible, click on the orange arrow to open the attendee pane. All right, thank you. Back to you, Mayor. Mayor, are you still with us? Can anyone hear me?
I hear you, Paul.
I can hear you, Paul, and I can see the slides.
Okay.
Yeah, I can hear you. I still can't see the slides, but.
I can hear you. I can hear you, but I don't see a thing.
Mayor Ortega, are you still with us? Looks like he may have gone offline.
This is going swimmingly.
Wow.
Sylvia, are you still with us?
Yes, Paul, I can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, it looks like the mayor has gone offline.
I did try and contact the mayor separately to see if he can come back on. We do appreciate your guys' patience. You have the patience of 2020. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for being patient with us. As, as it always seems, it's the technology that throws us a curveball on occasion.
Well, it seems that the mayor's having trouble with his router at home right now.
Well, no.
And it looks like the mayor's back. Mayor, we can see your video, but we don't have audio.
I don't see any video.
Mayor Protem, do you have video now?
I do not. It looks, what I'm seeing is the iPads, the video sort of got broken if you're using an iPad, is, is what seems to me that after the video from earlier, that any video being shared now is not working if you're on an iPad.
Okay.
Okay, I am back. All right, I don't know, did everybody else have that, or was that just my issue?
Mayor, we've had kind of a combination of issues, but it looks like primarily. Yeah, we can hear you, Mayor. Can you hear us? It's like we're having server-side issues this evening. Mayor, we can hear you, or can you hear us?
Wow. Crazy.
Yeah, thank you for bearing with us, everyone. As soon as we get the mayor back online, we can, we can proceed.
City council members, can I ask that you mute your microphones, please? Thank you.
Just a quick reminder for those who may have just joined us, we're having some technical difficulties. We've lost the mayor's feed. Please continue to stand by, and we'll try to get him back on as soon as we can. Thank you. Again, good evening, everyone. We apologize for the delay. The mayor is having difficulties with his internet feed at the moment. We're working to get him back online. Please bear with us while we correct this technical issue. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Huffman, in the interest of time and being efficient with time, should I go ahead and and pick up here where we left off, and then once the mayor's back in, he can take, take the meeting back over?
He most certainly can. I do have to ask Mr. Lavelle if there's any other way that the mayor could possibly call into the meeting. His vote is still going to be carried into the items on the meeting.
The fallback at this point would be to have him call in on the telephone number attached to the invite. I can send that to you offline, or I think Lisa's in communication with him now to have him call on that and do a voice vote. That would be kind of the workaround. It looks like he just responded via the questions pane, saying that he is on. Mayor, can you hear us? Sounds like we can receive texts from him via the webinar, but it doesn't look like we have audio yet.
Mayor Protem, if you want to go ahead and proceed, as long as we have the mayor available.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Oh, there you go.
Yes, Mayor, we can hear you now.
Yeah. Okay. It was.
We almost had to vote the 25th amendment.
Let me end this, because I got onto my phone, and of course, at the same time, it gets working on the, the computer. I apologize for that, everybody, if we've been waiting this entire time. So where are we at? Did anybody, did you continue moving forward, or where are we at?
No, so we're on item 4B right now. We waited for you.
Okay, sorry about that again. I apologize. We are on item 4B. I'm just gonna go ahead and keep plugging forward. Appointment of one housing authority board member, and at this point, I gotta pull up my agenda again. Whoever is on that one, please go ahead and start talking.
Thank you. Mayor and city council, due to the unfortunate passing of Mr. Brad Cuff, he was a housing authority board member. The housing authority board put out for application. They did receive two applications. The board did then vet those applications and brought to you a recommendation for Ms. Roberta Sonri. She is a resident of Grindy Manor, and this will be to fill an unexpired term from Mr. Cuff on the Board of Commissioners until the end of January 2022.
Okay, thank you, and I don't see Ms. Sonri on as a attendee, so I'll just defer to council. What would you like to do with this appointment?
To approve.
Okay, we have a motion for approval. Ms. Estes?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval of Ms. Sonri. Ms. Huffman, please with the call.
Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you with that. We will go ahead and keep plugging forward. Item number five, city council agenda request and announcements. I will start with Ms. Duncan. I do have to apologize. I completely everything is messed up. I'm gonna take full responsibility. Ms. Duncan, I was reminded that you were the one who pulled the Martin Luther King Day resolution to the council, and I completely went past you. I sincerely apologize. I did not do that out of anything other than just being dope-headed tonight, if, if I could just do it that way. So I'm gonna start with Ms. Duncan. If you'd like any more to say on that issue, or anything else you have for tonight, again, I sincerely apologize for skipping you over on that one.
Oh, no problem. It's not about me. It's about the celebration of getting us united as one people. So I would, I would just like to say thank you to everyone who helped with the first community service project for our youth council. It went off with the blast. Everyone who was involved in helping to get the boxes to the locations. We had some really nice things that will be donated to the Salvation Army on this weekend. Also, I'd like to say, My Kids Lunch, the free lunch, will be held on Sundays here in Fountain on Dale Street at the Grace Community Center on Sundays from 12:30 to 2:00. So from now on, the My Kids Lunch will be held this Sunday, on Sundays from now on, from 12:30 to 2:00, at the Grace Community Center on Dale Street. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Geek, anything tonight?
I would just like to wish everybody a happy new year, and hopefully we can get through some of this stuff, get people straightened out again. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Geek. Mr. Applegate?
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Estes?
Have to get my mic turned on. Just wanted to thank Councilmember Duncan for doing the MLK proclamation, was such a great event last year, and I'm sad that we're not able to do it, get together and do it this year, but I look forward to the virtual one. And just a reminder to everyone. And just a reminder to everyone that January is National Blood Donor Month, and I encourage everybody to get out there and donate a unit of blood, a unit of platelets, something. Every unit, every time you donate, a whole blood unit that can save up to three lives. And so we really need that, and that's all I have for tonight.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, on December 28th, I was at a virtual Fountain Creek Watershed District Board meeting where we approved the 2021 budget. It's by and large the same budget as was implemented last year for both that district board and the watershed activity enterprise. No big giant changes coming up there, at least as of yet. We'll have, in next month's meeting, we'll be choosing the officers for 2021. The new officers will be in place, starting with the February meeting, technically, the end of the January meeting, but the beginning for reals on the February meeting. And traditionally, the vice chair ends up becoming the chair for the board in subsequent years. I was the vice chair in 2020, and expect, if I make even a little bit of an effort towards becoming the chair in '21, I expect that to be the case. And it's definitely coming to somebody, to an elected official within El Paso County. And this is going to be the year where we are essentially going to have to roll back some of the changes that were made. You know, kind of mentioned it over, over the course of the year, as we started with, you know, our big project where half the, half Southmore Drive wants to fall into the creek. That kind of brought us to a head with Pueblo County's delegation trying to reshape that entire special district to essentially fund all their public works projects down in Pueblo County, if I could, if I could just be that blunt. And this is going to be the year where we work to roll that back. I think we're going to have an advocate on our side in the executive director, and at least playing more fairly. Brandy and I are going to have a meeting with him on Thursday, virtual meeting with Mr. Banks on Thursday, specifically to discuss Southmore. He's been working hard behind the scenes to get the Southmore project back onto a higher priority list, regardless of how the Monetary Mitigation Fund members have continually reshaped the scoring criteria to take El Paso County projects off the list. Bill has been working to sort of counteract that, at the very least for this project, because it was, at one point, the number two highest priority project along the entire distance of the creek to be done. And through some pretty savvy political manipulation, it's not even on the list, basically, anymore. Or it's way, way, way down, so that it's effectively not on the list. So Brandy and I are going to meet with Bill on Thursday and discuss a couple of options and get that back onto the capital improvements list in a much higher position. And the capital improvement projects list, granted, we're going to have all the same hurdles we had before, but having it on that list versus off that list at least gets it back on the table for conversation. And Bill's been working hard to keep it on the, on the capital improvements list. So if anybody is interested in, well, I can't say anybody. If Tamara would like to join that, or the mayor, I want to make sure we're not accidentally creating a three councilmember situation that, you know, we didn't have proper public notice for, and so on. But at the very least, maybe if Tamara would like to join as the alternate, that would be beneficial, and I can get the link out to you to join that meeting, and then I can backfill you on what we discussed, if you'd like, Mr. Mayor.
I think that'd be fine. I think that'd be helpful to Ms. Estes as well.
Yep.
Available.
I would definitely like to participate in that, since I've been in, sitting in a lot of the meetings and just to kind of see where we're going, so appreciate that.
No worries, and that's all I've got. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Protem. Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, things keep moving along, even though holidays and COVID and everything. Lot of meetings going on, a lot of different funding, different things going on. And we had our first PPACG legislative roundtable with all the newly elected and already seated representatives. To kick that off, they are being sworn in and beginning tomorrow, and they will meet for three days and get whatever done they need to get done statutorily. And then they will convene until February, when hopefully COVID will die down. But I think we need to be looking for bills that are going to be being dropped in the next few days and weeks, even though they're not in session. Then the State Transportation Advisory Commission, of which I'm an alternate on, we have a, we have a new commissioner, Lisa Hickey, which you guys might recognize her name. And she has done a lot of work for the city and was our interim attorney for a while, is our new transportation commissioner appointed by the governor. So that is really exciting, to have her in that position and somebody we already know and have a relationship with. But there's more funding coming from the federal government, and you're going to hear a lot of discussions on different projects it's going to be used for. A lot of back and forth going. Brandy has been in there, working really, really hard, even when she was supposed to be having a day off. I really appreciate the talking Brandy and I have done over this. Lot of money going to be moving around, old money, new money. The new money coming in doesn't have a lot of stipulations with it. And so hopefully, we can get some bigger projects done and maybe some communities, some smaller projects. For Brandy's going to have another meeting to hash this over again, I believe, on Thursday, after we vote on some of it tomorrow at PPACG. So just a lot of things going on, with different money going on with transportation. And so just be looking for it. Don't, don't panic when it looks really weird, because some of the money, we might actually give it up to go to Colorado Springs to do a project to get more money back in the long run. And if you followed that conversation, you did really, really well. So I'm sorry it's very confusing, but some of these, where you have to follow the different colors of money and what it can be used for, can get very confusing. So hats off to Brandy, who understands all the colors of money and helps, helps the rest of us understand it, too. She is just such an asset to have on our staff, and I really appreciate her and the hard work she's really doing. We also have a new board at PPACG, the Colorado Springs Aging Commission, folded in to become a regional board under PPACG. So we now can have a regional approach on working on aging issues and things in the area, and I'm really excited about, about that coming on board. And I was at a DOLA COVID meeting about an hour before this one. Lot of stuff going on there with funding. I think the most exciting thing is, is a rapid test that if our school district is signed up for it, and I don't know if they are or not, teachers can get the rapid test delivered right to their door, mail it back to Amazon, and have the test results back very, very quickly. So that's a brand-new pilot project that the state of Colorado is one of three states in the nation that was chosen for, because we're doing so well with our COVID vaccine, everything going on with the COVID vaccine distribution. So that is pretty much about it. Thank you. Any questions on colors of money?
No.
If you do, ask Brandy.
Yeah, okay, thank you for that, Ms. Thompson. I got a couple of things tonight. First one, Ms. Thompson actually sent an email earlier this weekend, Scott and I, about possibly doing a proclamation for our police department. And this weekend, I think it was this weekend or maybe Friday, a Police Appreciation Day or something like that. And, you know, we obviously know how much we, we are very appreciative and of our police department and the folks there that, that work hard every day to protect us. And not only that, but create a sense of community where they are leaders in that. And it's not about policing in the old days. It's, it's the new, new way of thinking that, you know, Chief Hevera really brought on, you know, I talk about the love bank. I give them a hard time about that. But, you know, there's a lot to be said around, you know, providing, you know, good things and depositing love all the time, so that in, in the event of, of a crisis or something, if we need to pull some of that out, we, we've got that in there, and the community is going to trust that we're going to do the right things. And even in times of, you know, conflict and things like that. So I think it would behoove us to go ahead and start that proclamation. And so on our next meeting, I think we're going to get a proclamation together, just to show, you know, our support for, for our police department and the things that they do. They, they've, you know, it started back with Todd Evans and his leadership and really kind of getting that, that department in a direction that really made sense, and, and what policing is supposed to be. And, you know, carry forward with Chief Hevera and the things that they're doing today, and, and a group of men and women that are there. And I think they're, they're a group that, that we are very obviously highly proud of and the things that they do. And, you know, in this world today, and again, I keep talking about it, but they are, you know, a sense of calm and, and support that I think a lot of our community really understands, too. So just thank you to them, and we'll have that proclamation ready. I don't know that we'll do a whole 5:30 meeting just for one proclamation, but we may just throw that in, in our regular meeting. So, and then the second thing is our meetings at council. And so we have obviously been doing these, and tonight was probably one of the worst nights since my router decided to take a nap in the middle of this. But we do want to, I want to throw the discussion out to council about having our meetings back in session again, at least offering the opportunity to be in the council chambers and be able to host some public as well. I do want to preface with, we're going to continue working, I think, with GoWebinar, at least this version, and, and moving forward, and still allowing those who are still not comfortable with maybe being back in public yet, or you just still, maybe you're caring for others, or you just don't want to put yourself in that risk. I totally understand that, and I give you that opportunity to still join and be a part of it that way. So kind of want to throw it out there. I'm open to, let's starting back and getting things open. And we move the dial back. I think we're safe enough, and we'll still have to have the protocols of mask wearing. We've got to social distance. So we're going to be limited somewhat on the amount of people that can be in, and that's to include council folk, staff, as well as public. And so I was given some numbers earlier that I think it's around nine or 11. But Scott did send me some information that is a public entity, as we are. We do have some leeway, and we can let a few more in, and not, not a bunch more. But when we were allowing people in, we weren't having a lot of public showing up anyway. So, but we do want to have that opportunity. So I'm okay with it if others do. If you have a strong opinion either way, I'd like to hear it. If I'm not hearing, you know, a lot of no's, I think maybe if, if staff's ready, we could maybe look at our next meeting on the 24th or the 26th to maybe starting back on, in, in person. So I'm going to open the floor, if anybody else has any opinions, one way or the other.
I would like to move back to a hybrid meeting, giving people the option to attend in person or not.
Okay, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I was also kind of in favor of a hybrid situation for the time being, until we can get cleared to get everybody back in. But, and if need be, I'm happy to, to switch off with council members who want to, you know, as we, depending on how long we do this, happy to switch off, and either be virtual, so they can be in person, or be in person if they prefer to be virtual. Either way, either way, I'm flexible on that.
I think it's a great idea. I think that may be something we need to look at. Of, all of a sudden, we have public beating down the door, and they want to come into our meeting, so. But yeah, that's a good option. Thank you. Ms. Estes?
I agree with the hybrid option. Give the people that can be there, let them be there. And those of us that still need to be avoiding big crowds, that option, too. So thank you for offering that.
Okay, I think that's, that's still doable. And I'm not hearing or getting any texts from, angry texts from Lisa or Paul, that that's not going to be possible. So I think we can continue doing that. I'm going to assume, I'm not hearing from the three others, but you guys, I'm just assuming that you're okay with moving back to a hybrid model. So if staff, I'm going to look to staff, are you guys ready? I'll look to Scott, are you guys, and Sylvia, are you guys okay with, let's looking at our next meeting on the 26th to be more of a hybrid version, where everyone's in, and we can move forward that way?
Yeah, so this is Scott. I'm totally fine with it. Just, I always rely on tech for this kind of thing. So as long as IT tech services is good with it, I'm good with it.
Okay, and so I'm going to look, Ms. Sylvia, go ahead.
I am as well. I'm all in favor of the hybrid. I miss your faces.
Okay, and then Lisa or Paul, do you have a opinion?
We're okay with it.
Yeah, no problems. We, we can accommodate like we have previously.
Okay, great. So, and I do have one comment from Mr. Clements, that he thinks is a good idea. I do, too. And so what we are going to do is, we're going to go ahead and we'll just put that on the docket. So our next regular council meeting on the 26th will be a hybrid version. So council members, if you want to be there, that's great. If you don't, for whatever reason, that's fine. If you can let at least myself and Sylvia know, just so we can kind of gauge on who we're waiting for and who we're not waiting for in person, just, you know, a day or two before, just to let us know, that would be awesome, just so we can kind of gauge that. And then Scott, I think you and I maybe just need to kind of figure out what's going to be that final number of who we can allow in and, and kind of work that as well, and see how to work that issue. Because I don't know if we're going to have a lot of people. I've had a couple of public say, when are we going to go back? I need to come to public comment. They don't want to do this. And so I don't know what that first meeting is going to look like, but maybe Scott and I, we can kind of just nail something down and then just kind of be ready for that. Okay, that's it from me on that portion. We're going to go ahead and move forward to public to be heard. Citizens may address items that are not on our agenda. We ask that you email your questions to council prior, or the city clerk prior to the meeting of council meetings, fountaincolorado.org. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but with direct staff to follow up. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, we do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less. And so I am looking to our public, and there's two that I know are, that I think are public. Mr. Clements, if you have anything or anybody else, I'm going to allow that time now. Just raise your hand on the button there. Okay, and I am seeing nothing, and I'm even getting that as well from Mr. Clements. So thank you for attending, anyway, tonight, Mr. Clements. We're glad you're doing good. So we're going to go ahead and move forward to consent agenda, item number seven. All items listed on our consent agenda are to be considered routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen requests, in which case, the item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately at the discretion of council. We have items A, B, C, D, E, and F. I'm going to look to council, what would you like to do with these items? Ms. Thompson?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
All right, and Mr. Applegate?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval of our consent agenda. Ms. Huffman?
Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on to item eight, old business, and we're going to skip past it, since we have nothing on old business tonight. Item nine, new business. Nine A is consideration of items removed for consent. That is not something we have to worry about tonight. Item nine B, it's a request for a transfer of ownership of a retail fermented malt beverage, FMB liquor license, for CF Altitude LLC DBA Alta number 6003 from Peter, or from Pester Marketing Company, located at 5510 South Highway 8587. Who will be taking this one?
I'll take care of this one. Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Mayor of City Council, this is a request for a transfer of ownership. As you all know, the DBA for this property is Alta. The old name is the Old Farm Crest. It's currently under the ownership of Pester Marketing Company, and the request for transfer will go to CF Altitude LLC. It will remain holding the same DBA as it is currently, so it'll still be known as Alta. Mr. Mayor, we do have Mr. Kevin Coats on the line, attorney for the applicant. If City Council has any questions on this transfer.
All right, so Mr. Coats, thank you for joining us tonight. I'm going to look to see if there are any questions. Do you have anything you'd like to speak about tonight, or just wait for questions?
Well, I unmuted myself. Hopefully, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep, you're good.
Perfect, thank you. Honorable Mayor, Member
Perfect, thank you. Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, my name is Kevin Coats. I'm from Dillon, Dillon, Denver. Represent CF Altitude. We appreciate you getting this on tonight because the closing in this transaction is Thursday. And from the standpoint of of this this location, there's actually seventy five of them throughout the state. So we really appreciate the assistance and the help of of staff and and council here. Assisting us in terms of issuing a temporary permit so we can continue to operate after Thursday going forward. As the application will be processed at state. But I'll just tell you that in terms of this transaction, CF Altitude is purchasing obviously the assets from. A piece of marketing company, but all the employees remain the same. The manager that's there will remain the same. The training program will remain the same. So it's really more of an investment transfer than it is a day to day operation or control transfer. So from that standpoint, there won't be much difference that you'll see at all, other than obviously it is required to 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 file the transfer of ownership. In a timely manner prior to the transaction, transaction is to occur on Wednesday. We're asking that the authority. Approve the approve the transfer, send it on to state as well as issue a temporary permit.
Okay, thank you. And with that, Ms. Thompson?
I don't drink. So what is fermented malt beverage?
Beer.
Thank you.
The short answer is full strength beer.
Thank you. Okay, you're just moving up. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I see no other questions. So with that, what would be the determination in the council on this item? Ms. Duncan?
I move to approve the liquor license transfer requested by CF Altitude LLC DBA Alta Store. Number six zero zero three located at fifty five ten South Highway eighty five eighty seven.
All right, and Mrs. Estes?
Second?
We have a motion of second for approval. Ms. Huffman?
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Putnam Lower, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, there you go, Mr. Coats, and best of luck with everything.
Thank you. If I just may ask briefly two procedural questions. Um, number one, obviously, we understand that with the passing of the of the vote here that the matter will be sent on to state. We will owe you some additional documentation in the closing, well, as wholesaler affidavits, and we'll get that to staff as soon as we have it post closing. But the temporary permit, I assume staff issues that. Will we have that tomorrow or Thursday?
Mr. Coats, I can answer that question for you. This is City Clerk Huffman. You will have that temporary permit. Available as soon as you can come into our office with this approval, we're able to issue that to you as soon as possible.
Can can we ask that it that it be emailed in the process for us to be able to then pass it along to? Obviously, we have a. You know, a huge hierarchy here, but is it possible to have a a copy emailed that we can post in the interim until we're able to send somebody over to pick up the original temporary permit?
Typically, we have, we require a signer to pick up the temporary permit. We can email you a copy once even somebody from the local store comes down to sign for it. We can email it then.
So somebody's going to have to come down from the local store, no matter what, to sign in order for us to obtain it?
Yes. But it's almost instantaneous.
Okay, well, we'll we'll, can we do that tomorrow if if possible?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we'll 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 make arrangements to send somebody down to. The city hall there, I assume, and and do they ask specifically for someone?
No, anybody at the front desk can help in the city clerk's office.
And it's just basically asked to sign for temporary permit and from there. We can make a request that you send us an email copy.
That's correct, sir.
Very, very, very good. Well, thank you very much. Sorry for a lot more questions than 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 answers with respect to the hearing, but thank you so much. And I appreciate your folks' time tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good one. Take care.
Okay, all right. So that is it for our meeting tonight. We're going to go ahead and move on to. Item number ten, correspondence comments and official reports. I'm going to start with our city manager. Hopefully, I don't mess anything up further tonight. I'm just like on a roll tonight. Scott Trainer, please take us, take it away.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity. I just have one quick item I just want to report out on. As the council knows, we are participating with the county and the region on that five star. Excuse me, program. And that's a program to allow restaurants and other businesses to open up at a little bit greater capacity. Than allowed for in the dial, in the in the covid dial that's used by the state. And so I just want to give a quick update on that. That that process is moving forward. Again, it's spearheaded by the county. And so we're participating in that. Right now, we're participating on an administrative committee, which is sort of the overarching umbrella committee. And then we also have three different folks serving in various subcommittee capacities, one on a complaint resolution group, subcommittee. Compliance subcommittee and then communications as well, because we think this is important. As things start shaping up that we're able to really communicate that well out to our businesses. So I just wanted to give that quick, quick update. And then Councilmember Thompson earlier asked about the services that are being provided at the health building. And when we get to Todd Evans, he'll report out on that. He's been really staying in close touch with them on that. So. When we get to his point, I just wanted to give the council a heads up. He'll report out on that as well. Thank you.
Yeah, Scott, real quick, on the five star program, this is a real quick question. I don't want to get into a whole long discussion and debate on this, but. So I think it was intended so that we could open up our restaurants again, but even though we're we're what, orange right now, correct?
Right.
So can that can restaurant or can we go from orange then back to the other one? I don't know what's below orange.
Yeah, so essentially, this is a voluntary program. I mean, this is just a real quick, like an over high level view, but. If a business is interested and they want to meet the additional compliance requirements of the state. And that includes things like air filtration systems, that kind of thing. That allows them to basically move one step higher. In the dial. So even though we may be at, let's say we were at red, it would allow them to function at orange level. If we're at orange, allows them to function. At the yellow level, right? So that's the way that 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 applies to any of them.
Okay, yeah, and I was, you know, again, I go back to, I think they did it just to get us out of the red and open up restaurants. But then I was curious if it was going to allow them orange to yellow and yellow to whatever. So, okay, okay, thank you. All right, is that it? Okay, good. Mr. Evans, go ahead. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. To answer Scott's question regarding the health department, right now in the exterior. In the parking lot, they are continuing to offer covid testing. We put it out on Facebook and the website late last week. But the health department has expanded the hours and the days. So now in Fountain, the hours eight AM to six PM. So that adds two hours a day and helps folks to get over there. And they have also added Saturdays and Sundays, which we haven't had down here. So now the covid testing is a seven day a week operation, eight to six. On the interior of the building, they have in a limited. Capacity opened up the women's and children's, the WIC program, and that entrance is on the west side of the building. So that has opened up at a limited capacity. So call before you go down there. They're moving forward right now without fitting the police substation that's going to be shared by our police department and the sheriff's office. Our OEM as well as community gathering. Room has also been, we've got about ninety percent of that complete. We just need to outfit the interior of that building. Now, in regards to other county services that are coming down there, they've discussed, you know, several others coming down there, but I'm hesitant on. On mentioning those until they do. And they do still want to do a kind of a joint. Press release when they determine what those services are and when they do the official opening of that. So I want to make sure in public I don't mention anything and over promise and then not have something occur. So at this point, they're moving forward. From the city perspective wise, we've got all the ADA improvements interior that we had committed to. I believe there's one water fountain that needs to be adjusted. Other than that, it's done on the exterior that we committed to. All of the ADA parking on the entire west side of the building has been completely redone. So Bob oversaw that, the asphalt being completely pulled out. There is now ADA concrete parking pads. On that west side that includes an ADA ramp leading from them directly to that west entrance. He's also in the process of getting the striping redone. And then once spring hits, we will be coming back and doing a resurface on the parking lot. So things are moving well. Sharon, I hope that answered your question. If you've got anything else for me, though, please let me know now, or I can hit you with a complete list later on. And other than that, I don't have anything else, Mayor. All right, thank you.
Is the bus started yet?
No, because they're they opened WIC in just a limited capacity. We did not want to start the bus service and then have poor folks. Show up there and then not be able to enter the building. So we're just standing by and waiting for county health to let us know when they would like us to start. But all of the logistics, all of the approvals are in place and we've got the signs ready to go. So those will be posted and that service will will begin the next day after we're notified and we'll get that notice out to the public as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Todd. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Duncan.
Okay, just one more question. On the community gathering room, it does it have its own separate entrance and exit?
Yes, ma'am, it does. That's one of the things we're waiting on. There is going to be a system where we will be able to utilize. On the west side of the building, a entirely separate E and E point entrance and exit for that. And be able to take folks directly back to that room, both in and out.
Oh, I can't wait. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, before I move on, just making sure. Okay, thanks, Todd. Anything else? Okay, Troy, anything tonight?
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm going to move on. I saw Mr. Blankenship. Are you on?
I am here, Mayor, and I have nothing to add. Thanks for the opportunity. Have a good evening.
Thanks. Chief Maxon?
Happy New Year, everyone. Fire Department is doing well. It's good to see everybody.
All right, thanks a lot. Lisa, anything from IT?
No, we've got nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for helping me out tonight. I know you didn't do a lot, but man, everything was wacko over here. So thank you with that. Mr. Treelch?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have nothing for this evening. Happy New Years, everybody.
Okay, and last and certainly not least, our Ms. Huffman, anything from City Clerk's office?
Thank you. Just real quickly, Mr. Mayor and City Council, I did want to give everybody an update. As you may have noticed today, we did have some traffic going into our Lorraine Building today. I was. A representative from Compassion Food Distribution of Colorado reached out to me. Late in the week, they had lost their initial place to hold their food distribution. And asked if there was a place that they could utilize here in Fountain. Of course, we want to be able to reach as many citizens as we can to help out. And so we allowed them to go ahead and distribute out of the Lorraine Building on the east side, the gym side of the building. They're hoping to be able to come back and this time will be a little bit better prepared on not only the traffic. But the number of people that we're going to have go through that area. But we're grateful that they chose us. And we're even more grateful that we can help more citizens in this community. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Awesome. Anytime we can help out, we're there. All right, I'm going to go quickly through council and once again, I do want to apologize to Ms. Duncan for skipping past her on the Martin Luther King thing. You know, she did bring that proclamation forward and and wanted to give her that opportunity and I just completely skipped it, just boneheaded on my part. But. Ms. Duncan, anything further tonight?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Geek?
Nothing for me tonight.
All right, Mr. Applegate?
No, nothing else. Thank you.
Ms. Estes?
Trying to find my microphone again. Nothing more this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Prota?
Nothing more for me. Thanks.
All right, Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, just one last thing. Some of you may know former, as in one day, former County Commissioner Norm Steen from Tiller County. You've probably run into him in meetings over the years, is now the new deputy director for Doug Lamborn's office. So if it's just kind of a good thing to have a name and a face put together, if you've met Norm, I think he's going to be great at that position.
All right, I do want to wish Commissioner Gonzalez congratulations. I know, I think a week ago, they had their swearing in, but. Just on him, you know, getting reelected and and representing, he does represent Fountain very well. And though he hasn't been with us in a while, just because of the covid, he's been really still in touch and and moving forward with with the county and. And, you know, ensuring that Fountain has a say in in those types of things. So just wanted to wish him good luck and. In his next term, as well as Ms. Bradfield, as she takes over and and what the good work that Ms. Landgraf did and. And, you know, just I know she'll represent us as well at the state level. So thank you to all those again who put yourself out there and. And and really, you know, again, service to others. We kind of started the meeting with that, but just service to others and. And how we can, you know, affect change in our little corner of the world and and do the things that we need to do and. And to everyone here tonight and and my my fellow council members who sit on each side of me, I again, I appreciate you. I look forward to. A good twenty twenty one, regardless of everything else that goes on. I know here we can, we can, we can show progress and what that looks like and. As we move forward. So with that, I do apologize for my technical technology related issues that we had here. For some reason, my router just decided. To go kaput in the middle of nothing and and my family was madly trying to get things moving again, too. And it was just one of those things. And of course, it had to happen at six oh. At six oh nine rather than doing it now in about two minutes. But it is what it is, and thank you for bearing with me. Again, our next meeting on January twenty sixth will be a hybrid. So if you do want to come in and visit with us and be in person. Some of us will be there again, masks, social distancing, all those things will be in play. We are going to ask that you register just in case an exposure does occur. We want to let you know. So that you can get yourself taken care of if that was an event that occurs then. With that, I will see you all on January twenty sixth. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.